Session this morning. Good morning and welcome to our work session this morning. This is the work session of the Board of Weber County Commissioners on this Monday, December the ninth. It's just after one o'clock. We welcome those of you who are here in public and also those of you who have decided to join us online. Present today, we have Commissioner Sharon Bollos, who's joined us here live and myself, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Faur will be joining us later, but is attending a funeral at the moment, so. The first item is a discussion and/or action. And by the way, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing, so no public comments will be taken, at least in this portion. Item number one is a discussion and/or action for approval of the minutes for the commission work session held last week on November twenty fifth.
Motion to approve.
I guess that'd be a couple of weeks ago. Motion to approve second, I'll second that all in favor. Aye, that motion carries. We'll now move on to item number two, which is the Nordic CRA Resolution Discussion. Our presenter today is Ms. Stephanie Russell. She's joined by Lauren Thomas and we also have Ashlyn. Jessica here with us today. Perfect.
Ms. Nurse?
Ms. Russell, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much for the time today. As we're moving through this process, this is our next step in our process of creating the Nordic Valley Community Reinvestment Area. I've got Lauren with me. We've got two pieces that will be presenting to you for a vote. And Lauren, if you don't mind going over the resolution and the ordinance, that'd be fantastic.
So the process for the CRA, once all the interlokal are adopted, we're going to pass this resolution during the CRA meeting.
So you're going to suggest we pass this? Thank you.
Yes, we'll suggest that you pass this. It'll be on December seventeenth, I think, is when it's scheduled for.
So we'll host that meeting twenty minutes prior to the commission meeting. And that's the meeting of the Community Reinvestment Agency.
That's right.
For those who don't know, the Community Reinvestment Agency is composed of the legislative body. That's according to state statute. So state statute dictates how this process works and who is appointed to that board. So you guys will meet as a board of the Community Reinvestment Agency to pass a resolution which adopts the project area plan and budget for the community reinvestment area of Nordic Village. Following that meeting, you'll go into your regular meeting, which is your regular commission meeting. And then, and then in that meeting, we're going to ask that you entertain the ordinance, and that will be a first reading of that ordinance. That ordinance actually is what creates the project area plan and budget and creates the CRA for Nordic Village. You'll do a first reading of that on December the seventeenth. And then we'll have a second reading with a potential vote on December thirty first. And that would, that's, those are the final steps in creating the community investment area for Nordic Village.
What does, just be more specific, just for those who are here and also those who might listen to this in the future. What does this CRA do? What's the purpose of this?
Great question. So community reinvestment areas are, once again, allowed by state statute, they're governed by state statute. They're a funding mechanism for development projects. So in, in this particular case, what we're utilizing as the development finance mechanism for this particular CRA is going to be tax increment finance. Tax increment finance is above and beyond the base value of what the development project generates. So we'll just use some generic numbers. Say the property is bringing in a hundred dollars a year in, in property taxes. When the developers come and start developing.
It brings in a hundred dollars a year in property taxes because it's currently in greenbelt?
Correct.
Okay.
So once the developers come in and start developing on that project, the property value starts to increase. That's what we call the increment. It kind of looks like a triangle if you wanted to put it into a grid.
Sorry to keep interrupting you.
No, you're fine.
So once the application's made for the property to be improved, then back taxes are paid on that property as if for the five years in arrears to turn it from what it was in Greenville going back to, correct?
Kind of. It is a reimbursement, but the way that it works is you have a baseline value that the county will always, always receive, regardless of the property project. And then the county works with the Community Reinvestment Agency to create the CRA. And the CRA interlokal dictate the participation amount and the participation time. And this is kind of a nuanced process because we have to partner with some of the other taxing entities in, in concert with the county. So the CRA goes out and I manage the CRA, so I go out to the school district, in this case, the school district, the fire district, and we were based in water. And say, listen, we've got this wonderful development project. This is the infrastructure lift that's required to get this project up off the ground. Currently, that project has quite, quite a significant amount of infrastructure lift. So we say, would you be willing to be a partner in this? And the CRA then contracts or goes into interlocal agreements with the different taxing entities, which would be the county, central, excuse me, the county, the school district, fire district, and we were based in water in this particular scenario. Sometimes it's not all the districts and sometimes it's more than that. But in this particular, there's four districts participating. The districts decide, their boards individually decide what percentage they'd like to participate at and for how long they'd like to participate. So each district has its own interlocal. So we're finishing that process up. Before we bring this to on the seventeenth, all the interlokal will have been executed for the four districts. And that's an opportunity then for us to actually create that CRA. Once the CRA is created and put into place, that has to be, Lauren will facilitate that through the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And we'll also facilitate it through our Clerk Auditor's Office. When the project's ready to trigger the CRA and they have a time period specified in the interlocal when they can trigger that CRA, that's when the increment starts to be collected. At the end of the year, the project will always pay its full taxes regardless. That's how it works. Then our Clerk Auditor's Office goes in and, and pulls out the increment out of the taxing entities and gives them a reimbursement to that. Our new policy, as it states that we just had you guys implement, that new policy is very specific as to what that increment can be used for. The state's is not as specific. The state allows developers, allows cities or counties to give that back as cash to developers. And we don't do that here in Weber County. We do it as it's monitored, it's recorded, and they have to report that they use those dollars for infrastructure. Not only are we requiring that for the ones that we create, for the series that we create, we're also requiring it for the ones that we participate in. Say we go into any kind of agreements with Ogden City or Far West or Riverdale, any of the cities that we're working with currently. They have to report annually where those tax dollars are going. What I need to also be very specific about is that tax increment does not exist unless you do a project. So it is not taxpayer dollars. It is not coming out of anyone's particular property taxes except for the participating districts and except for the participating area that the project area is in. And that's why when we, when we do hearings and postings for this, we include a map of the project area. So, once again, these projects cannot move forward without a little bit of assistance in the, as it relates to public infrastructure because they're very large projects. We don't have a problem with our tax entities participating, and let me tell you why. Ask me why.
Well, I'm asking you why?
Because they gain significantly from them. These are very large, the increment is very large for these types of projects because they're tourism based and they're commercial based. They don't impact the school district as hard. And the school district, as you know, is how, how much of a percentage of our, of our property tax does the school district get?
Yeah, fifty-five percent.
Fifty to sixty percent. So they don't impact the districts. So the districts are very happy to participate in these projects because the return for them is significant. Once again, you said that, you kind of said the, the magic word, and that is, this is in a greenbelt. So this project's bringing in minimal amount of property taxes. One of the other benefits for this is that this will not impact the newly incorporated city. They won't be participating in it. So what do you think the percentage of the newly incorporated city is going to get off of this project?
A ton.
One hundred. They'll get one hundred percent of the property tax off of this project, while the county and the other districts will be reimbursing that to make sure this project goes forward. So additionally, this is a huge win for that whole area up there as it relates to brand new infrastructure.
Well, as it relates to their city budget.
As it relates to the new city budget and the infrastructure lift. Creating sustainable, long-term infrastructure that's the right size. We're doing right size infrastructure up there. It's all going to be brand new. So this is just a really big win as it relates to economic development, not just for the Ogden Valley, but for Weber County as a whole. And that's why we have had just incredible support with the different taxing entities as it relates to supporting this project.
For those, and just as a reminder too for us. And we, by the way, I'll interrupt you to say, welcome Commissioner Faur, who's joined us. Now, we appreciate you being present and just this, all this infrastructure will help the state's division of water quality reduce or.
The nitrate levels?
The nitrate level, and it'll also, for none of us who are listening online or in the room will probably, well, maybe you Ashton, but, or your kids or grandkids, but it'll, it'll have an impact looking down the road. If one of, if some of us don't take responsibility now, it'll, it'll, it'll just be no way later, so.
Now, this is a fantastic public-private partnership. And truly, in this day and era, one of the things, you know, that has, that, that plagues economic development is lack of infrastructure as it relates to development projects. And the state of Utah has done a really great job in creating two very exceptional finance tools that help the needed infrastructure go in. And it's a partnership with the developers, and that's the only way we can do it. We don't have state funding, we don't have federal funding. But what we do have is developers that are willing to come in and partner with local entities, be it a city or a county, and put in the needed infrastructure and the right size of the infrastructure. Instead of creating multiple districts and little pockets of, of infrastructure development, we're creating an opportunity where we are bringing the infrastructure all together for the right reason and the right size so that it has long-term sustainability and it has the ability to pay for itself. And that's what's most important is neither the CRA or the PID have a burden on the general taxpayer. They are all generated off of property taxes levied onto the project area by the private developers. And that is such, that needs to be.
Not even the neighbors on Viking Drive, anywhere else will be burdened with this.
And this is so important.
Just that new area.
And this is so important to understand.
Well, if I think people get out there and they make this stuff up, they get in the, they get on their, their coffee shops and they say, oh, it's going to be this, this, and this, and it's just not, it's just not true.
It's not true at all. The state doesn't allow that. And the way that these, the way that these finance mechanisms work, they are a direct result of private investment.
People who choose to become informed on these kinds of things are really, they, they understand. Commissioner Faur, go ahead. If you have any comments, I'll take that now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Pleasure to be with you. No, I think Stephanie hit it all on the head. I think there's a lot of miscommunication out there dealing with CRAs, TIS. You know, how that actually plays. And, you know, people need to understand that it's only within that project area that tax, it's all incremental. So it doesn't compromise, doesn't increase tax on anything until the infrastructure, until the development takes place. And the good news about this is that in our policy for Weber County, it all goes into infrastructure and not, sometimes, sometimes in the past, I just met with a number of legislators at this funeral I attended and asked about how our CRAs, TIS were going in Weber County. A lot of those people were authors of this legislation we're now seeing. But where it has to go into infrastructure versus go into developer's pocket. I know there are a lot of people that miscommunicate for some reason that it's going into developer's pocket. That's absolutely not the case. I would hope that people would take the time to be educated on CRAs before they, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, before they come up with their own stories. It's something that's used across the state, used very effectively. And the state depends on it for proper infrastructure development, proper development. It's the only way to go. So.
Mr. Bollos, any comments or questions?
I don't have any thanks. And I, I just, just thanks for your work. I'm glad that we have our policy in place. That's super helpful. That was catalytic. And, and I want to say one last thing about our policy so that everyone, just for the record. So in 2022, the state did an audit on the, on the state CRA process. And they came out with some findings and some recommendations. And I, I brought those to the commission and said, listen, I would love to tighten up our policy and add these recommendations in. In addition to adding those recommendations into our policy, we went, we took it a whole step further. And we created our Economic Development Finance Committee. Everything gets reviewed before it comes even to you guys through that finance committee. And then we implement our new policy and our new policy is very strict. And you're not going to find a stricter policy in the state of Utah. I would challenge, I would challenge anyone to find a stricter policy in the state of Utah as it relates to our community reinvestment area and our tax increment finance distribution. We have checks and balances. We have required infrastructure lift. And we have a reasonable percentage that we worked with the other taxing entities in our, in our county to come up with this policy. So I'm, I'm incredibly proud of this policy and it's, it's taken almost two years to implement. But it's, it's going to set an example on the state level of how you do, how you use this, how you use this particular incentive correctly.
And like always, we've helped some of the smaller cities, the Hoopers and the ROAS and the others. And I'm sure the new city coming on will be willing to help them as they move forward.
Absolutely.
Would you be available the next few minutes if those who are in the room, we're going to go into closed session here next when we go into closed session outside, you'd be available to answer questions?
Sure. Happy, happy to do that. Yeah, absolutely. Love to do that.
All right.
Anyway, so you will have on your agenda on the seventeenth, we'll have the CRA meeting for the resolution and then on your agenda, the ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner Faur?
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Perfect. Commissioners, we're now a little behind time, but we'll move on to our closed session to discuss the purchase exchange for lease of real property. For those of you, you online, we're going to excuse you right now. We will come back when we're done. But this is regarding this building, so I'll entertain a motion to move to closed session.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll call takes all three and it's unanimous. We'll go there now.
Well, for some reason.
Gage, do you want to just call in? Or do you want me to hurry and set up another Zoom link?
No. So you want me to call?
Yeah. Call Jim's phone.
Gage, I'll just put you on my phone. Stand by.
I'll stand by. Standing by. Hello. We got you.
Hey, Gage.
Yeah.
Mute yourself and while you're on the phone.
entertain a motion to come out of hold on sorry
six four years
oh sorry I can't wait
I'll entertain a motion that we come out of closed session and go in back into our work session second by commissioner Froh if you would unmute yourself commissioner Froh I'm gonna hang up on this other okay
it's the two next to us
oh yeah 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 did you get any or did you have any
unfortunately no we were gonna be originally but yeah
I was involved
we're trying not to regress another we're the far end far end of
okay I just had heard so okay we're back into our work session here thank you for those of you who are online have chosen to be with us we're going to move to no by the way no action was really taken in our closed session just by way of discussion item number four and I apologize for being late this is a discussion regarding the zoning map amendment application for a rezone of A1 to C2 point nine two acres at forty thousand square feet Felix Yavorino
yes
Charlie Ewark Rick Grover Sean Wilkinson Bill Ross are here for this presentation and we're gonna go right with you Felix
okay yeah I'd be happy to just kind of give some a brief overview
I can see how you're happy you got a smile on your face that's really nice go ahead
so yeah I mean last time we met we were we're getting this thing ready hopefully so they're a good product for you to hopefully consider in a public hearing possibly next week if possible this is for Mr Joshua Skidmore he owns this property and it's right by the high school and what he'd like to do is rezone it from A1 to C2 and that would it would better accommodate the uses that he's currently operating on the property which is an indoor sport court there's a couple of pickleball courts inside this building a lot of the residents are pretty well aware of this the sport court and it did get a unanimous positive recommendation from the planning commission and our discussion last time we met was there was there was some concern from commissioner Harvey about the the uses the wide range of uses in the C2 zone and so what Mr Skidmore and I have done is we've we've narrowed down those uses to things that he think would he would be able to accommodate the parking for those uses as well as things that 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 would be advantageous for him on this property and so what I have on this screen here is just the memo that was provided and I'm also in that memo I provided those uses and those uses will be in the development agreement for this development we have you know things things that are very closely related to your commercial type uses and all of the uses listed here would be just permitted uses and so the the applicant would need to get a designer view and part of it is that that designer view would 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 look at the parking requirements so you can see there's this is their site plan and you can see that in that that structure pushed toward the back of the property is where the pickleball courts are contained and then you've got any existing residents so once the zone changes the the residents will be a non-conforming use but the owner does plan to demolish that residence and build some a type of business structure at which point during design review we would require him to you know bring the forty forty three hundred West Street frontage up to C2 standard which you know your complete street design and that's also in the development agreement and then going on to this last page to address commissioner Froh's comments actually before I go there this is this is a page taken from the development agreement and so you can see where we've we've kind of separated some of these requirements out to say you know that that first hundred feet that measured from the center line shall be reserved for Main Street commercial and then you also have the developer agrees to dedicate seven feet to the public right of way you also have the where we make reference to one of the exhibits in this in the development agreement and that's that's the exhibit in the development agreement would be the the C2 zone uses and then we also mentioned outdoor lighting fire protection things like that going on to the next page this one is to hopefully address what with the concern from commissioner Froh was the accesses into this property so you can see that the Skidmore property in relation to the high school property to the north you've got that high school access with the drop off and then you've got the Skidmore access which there is a distance there fifty eight point nine feet between those accesses and then you also have the the church access which is about a hundred and eighty one feet between the Skidmore access and the church access just I I was curious if if the engineers placed any type of the county engineer placed any type of restrictions as to like maximum or minimum distance for driveways or accesses and they they didn't they didn't have any concerns with these distances and so
maybe that looks
blow that up a little will you
yeah sure
get that little plus up there hi there boy the only problem we got there too on there that's not just an access see what it says in that donut
yeah that's a drop off
did engineering take that into consideration when you talked to them
they did yep and he said it's not a concern for at least with Ashelman who I spoke with
that's the main vein
his bus is going in that way
I don't know if that's the bus drop off or just
yeah because I mean elementary school drop off I think it's a little different
high school drop off is not a very
yeah it's not as crucial as
and it's not as used as a bus drop off
yeah so I was kind of wondering if this is the bus drop off or if this is just for more administration and
that is a good question I mean you can see that there's some parkings there's some parking areas along the drop off turn around and then there's also some parking that's further to the southwest of that so this would serve as a as an as an access into the school grounds but it's not a through street that's any consolation
I'm actually more concerned and I just want to do the right thing I don't want to limit this guy and what he can do with his property but I also fifty feet's not very big not very much and I honestly think that I'd rather have an entrance closer to the church as all of us know just in case they don't see a lot of use during the week they only see it on Sunday and that last time I looked I haven't seen a high school open on Sunday in a long time except for baccalaureate yet and that's once a year so
I don't think there's any reason why it couldn't be shifted over to the south
to me it needs I would think it would be more responsible for us to ship that thing over to the right up against the church give a little more spacing a little more pedestrian you know along that sidewalk I I'm splitting hairs here what do you think what you guys are the pros Sharon what comments you got on that
so this isn't looking at entrance this is an entrance to the high school to the drop off but it's looking at another one right there right next to it
well no that arrow is pointing to the the distance measured but the Skidmore access is the the arrow pointing westward
yeah
well they're both pointing oh right there it's the Skidmore
oh yeah sorry
but you're concerned that that's too close to the high school entrance kid
my concern is that this entrance right there and this entrance right here is fifty sixty feet apart from one another
it's both an aerial but what's there right now
sure maybe I can share my screen here again
I don't know if this changes your
well you know what I know he probably had access there the whole time
no before the high school was there
that's correct That's correct. I, I don't dispute that, but now, now what, it was a single family home with the, with the basketball for his Sunday dinners in the back. Now he's wanting to change the use to something more than.
What was that? He already has. I know that.
It's, it's built. Sure, people are using it.
I know that.
Yeah, yeah. He's just not in compliance. It's not, yeah. He's not, he's, he's trying to make a legal use out of it because he's not legal right now.
Yeah, I didn't know if you guys were already aware of what improvements were on site versus not on site, but, uh, I don't see any reason why I can't put a different access in, in a different location.
So, I mean, you guys are the planners, but why wouldn't you, why would you allow, now that they've got that right there to eat? I mean, that wasn't his fault that the high school put there.
No, which means, tells me that the high school's fine with the distance. That happens has been there.
The high school is fine with the distance because the high school says, oh, there's a residence next door. Now the residence is wanting to change it to a commercial.
Operating, that was what I'm telling you.
Whether it's. We're not gonna get another chance. I respect that it's been operating.
Yeah.
I get that. I don't have a question about that.
Well, and Commissioner Harvey, um, one other thought too is when the pickleball is being used and at night, when they come out, the headlights are gonna be shining into that resident. But if you go over, that area is opens, well, it's part of that, um, open area for the that residential same division to be more ag. Um, so if you did have that access, you wouldn't have it going into a resident. And you'd have it further away from the high school.
That's right.
Yeah.
Access here.
He's decided to change his use from residential to, to commercial, which is great for him. I have no problem with that. The, the, the what he's trying to do, I, I'm okay with. I think it's great, but I think, okay, because he's trying to change that, we probably ought to do it right. Would be my thing, and I, I'm surprised actually that I'm the one that's bringing it up, because you guys are the ones that have taught me you don't have separation. You don't say you can't have, I mean, tw- forty-three hundred's supposed to be a main thoroughfare.
Yeah, I, I think we were going more off of, you know, our engineering and making sure that safety for the accessibility, but it does make sense to shift it further to the south.
I agree.
Yeah, I could see that's a rational for that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to be a good student of what you all have taught me. And so Charlie, you're trying to say, think about, you know, you, you've never come in here when you say, think about fifty and sixty and a hundred years from now. You brought me in something that you're thinking about fifty and sixty and, and a hundred minutes from now. Not years.
Right, Sean?
So, that access already exists. Are we telling them that they have to put in a new access and close this access? Because if, if we're telling them they close this access, or that they don't have to close this access, people are going to use it anyway, and I'm not sure what we accomplish by putting in the other access. Because now there will be two accesses there that people will be using, making it even more unsafe. And people will choose what they do. We, we're not gonna tell them.
Oh, and I, I, I agree with that, and I think you don't make it, you, I think you close the one.
Close that, then you'll just pack up to the building.
That's right.
You just have to move it.
Uh-huh. I think you close the one and you move it to the other side, at least give it.
Is that, is that the driveway for the home?
Yeah.
How do you close that?
Well, that, that's my question to my point. If they, if the, uh, commercial use goes away.
Do they just. You mean the residential use goes away?
No, the residential use goes away, you're just closing their driveway.
Because this is, the, the house was there, that's what their, that's their driveway.
Are they wanting to keep the house in, okay?
Yes.
For now.
For now, it would be non-conforming.
They'll still have a commercial zone up there, so they could put other commercial uses up there, pare the house down.
And if that were to happen, now, how many people come as part of this pickleball operation? How many courts do they have?
Four, four.
The map shows four.
Okay, so they may have
Six.
Four or five cars at a time, because people are gonna be coming together.
So sixteen players.
I mean, thi- this isn't a it's not a come and go kind of thing. It's not a drive-through. It's not a heavily trafficked type use. So that, that would be my argument against putting in the other area. I, but what, the, the decision that we make now determines what this is going to be in the future.
That's right.
Well, and one thing too, you may want to think about is making that viable commercial when you're looking at C two, and if you have the drive access going more through the primary area of the lot. It's gonna make it hard to develop that front area to make it functional. Because of the way the building is, is designed, most likely the driveway is going to be coming right here.
It went all the way to the south.
Get in there.
And I'm not sure that much distance makes a, a big difference in what, in what we're trying to accomplish.
Commissioner Harvey, uh, long-term for other kinds of projects in commercial areas, what we would expect to see, assuming the school didn't claim exemption on everything, what we'd expect to see is a shared access on that northern property line. And then they could use the same, they would have to cooperate on funding, but they would use the in and out, the single in and out for that school. If that school was, was a commercial property.
I mean, that, where you eliminate all access off of that property, and they have to come into school, then go over. I get what you're saying.
What is this right now?
It looks to be just a detention.
I was gonna say, it's like detention or retention based thing.
Is that the schools?
That's the schools. Just wondering why the road wasn't put next to the driveway in the first place.
Yeah, looks like it's detention.
Look, I'm not gonna, I don't think I'm gonna fall on my sword on this thing, but I think because he's decided to go, I, I'm, I'm a little jealous of him. But once you decide, I mean, it's, it's a great building, but once you decide to go, go commercial and you make a business out of it, which he's done, he's taken it from a, a family operation, kind of a thing to a business. Then there are other requirements that, that come with having a business. Now, you know, if I live across the street, you talked about those lights going into the guy's house, I wouldn't be happy about that. I'd want it moved a little over uh, there, but there's just some other things, and maybe that eighty, additional eighty feet coming further to the south is enough, but I think that's part of the, and, and, and the people who live in the house, they would have to enter into the commercial and go around, because I, I imagine that those two pieces of property, at least they were at one time, were all together. They were all the same person.
Likely.
Right?
Likely.
Big possibility.
Something else made me think about, uh, for the commercial area is, uh, we do like and want to encourage angle parking for the street. So when this person does, when this landowner does put commercial up along the street frontage, we'll see cars pulling in, pulling out right on forty-three hundred, that, uh, right in the, on, on the frontage, which I think if you've got some concerns about them pulling into this driveway, um, you probably have perhaps even more concerns with them pulling in and out on that frontage, angle parking on the frontage. Um, my thought on all that could be that maybe it's not quite as big of a, of a, of a problem as we may think it is, and if you'd like, we can ask for uh, traffic study to, uh, to show us exactly how much is coming and going from this project.
I hate to keep the labor in him and I'm, I'm trying not to be the guy that says no. I'm trying to find a way to say yes, but when you take something like this and you make it a commercial operation, there are other things that go along with it. You know, he was, I mean, this, that building's twenty years old, isn't it? That, that pickleball, that, I mean, it's twenty, maybe thirty years old when they built them. And so, I mean, it's just, it's, the whole place has changed out there. That's no fault, I'm not blaming it. It's no fault of his own. I just want to do it right, because if we don't do it right now, if it'll forever be that way, and, and somebody or somewhere, they'll say, I wish you would have done this or this or this.
Yeah.
So if the access goes into the middle of the lot, then you're splitting up the commercial potential really in two pieces. With parking behind the two buildings. You'd have two potential commercial buildings on the front. The one on the south side would be limited because of that, the way that that shed is built in an L shape.
You have two.
So you'd be, so you'd have, if you put it in here, you'd have a commercial building here, possibly in here as an entrance here.
That'd maximize about, yeah.
Not gonna be as deep because of that. He has a garage door on that, right? It's not just a man door.
I'm not sure what's.
That's a garage door. It's a garage door, so it would restrict, it would restrict the B blocks as then.
Would you like us to work with them to create that new drive approach? And eventually phase out the existing drive approach over time, like maybe when he does do more commercial uses on the project. So maybe it's the southern boundary is the drive approach, so that we're not messing up his garage door on that back building.
Yeah, I'm okay to phase it, but as soon as he, you know, he's gonna do this now, and as soon as, soon as he moves that house, he's gonna come in with another design. With the same entrance, with another whole big building here, and then all the entrances to the building here. And so it just keeps growing, growing, growing. Pretty soon, have we done the wrong thing? What would you, what would you have done if this were a, a blank, I, I mean, I realize that building's there now, but I, I feel like I don't know why I'm bringing this up, honestly. I feel like this is something that you guys would have made the suggestion and say, hey, this is the, this is the smartest thing to do. Unless I'm not paying attention to you guys when you're coming in here and doing your planning. My suggestions are merely a reaction to what you've been teaching me over the last eight years.
What was this?
And if I'm off here, then, but I don't think I am.
Did the application come in before the school was built, before we knew what was going there?
I don't think so. I think this was an enforcement measure that was put on hold while he tried to go through the process, because he was running a business with, with the permit. This has been a little bit of a hard one, because yes, uh, Commissioner Harvey's right. If he started with this proposal from ground up, we would have said, you know what, you need to do something different with your parking lot and your drive approach.
We would have moved it to the south?
We would have asked for something different. I don't, I don't know.
You can't go, I don't think you can go in the middle of that. It really hinders the commercial opportunity.
I wouldn't want to tell him. What I would tell him is that that's a little too close to the high school's driveway. Can you propose something different and see what he comes up with, or cooperate with the high school, or something to that effect. Um, if it was a brand new site with this use being proposed, where it's not, where it's kind of a ask for forgiveness later, trying to figure out how to retrofit it in a way that can work for them and for the future.
I want him to be a thriving pickleball business. I run it to work. I want it to be successful for him, and I hope he does very, very well. But for the safety of those who are there who walk the sidewalk, active transportation and everything else, you guys have taught me that you have to have more separation than fifty or sixty, fifty-eight feet. So, that's all I'm saying.
Where's the church entrance struggling?
Right where the red, red, uh, church arrow is.
So if you moved all the way to the south, it'd be about the same distance.
Yeah, you'll, you'll be either be close to the school or close to the church.
One or the other.
Yeah.
What do you prefer, close to the school or close to the church?
Closer to the church.
Yeah, they're probably not used on the same day as. Or.
You'd have to, he'll have to flip the building essentially. You'll have to take that piece off the bottom and move whatever's in there to the top. Right?
Yeah.
Say that again.
He'll have to, whatever you, this, but whatever's in there, he'll have to take that off the building and move it up.
I don't know. It depends on what, I like your idea answer there too, Charlie. When you said originally we'd come up with this, I mean, we're reacting now because I, and I love the fact that he's trying to do the right thing and come under code. And so, uh, wonderful. Let's help him do that the right way, but in doing so, let's make sure that we're not causing planners down the road, another problem, when he decides to remove the house, which will eventually happen. Or take that house and make it commercial with something else.
Maybe that's what we do is when he decides to move the house, we require him to eliminate the access on the north side and shift it to the south.
And move it X amount. It must be, but the, the northernmost boundary of the new entrance must be at least this many feet away from the entrance to the high school.
I think it needs, that has to go all the way to the south.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're gonna have two commercial buildings. That's not gonna be as useful.
Right. Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. That allows him to do that for now, and then it, that's great. I'm happy with that.
We'll do the development agreement tweak and.
Excellent.
Get it on your agenda.
That allows him to move forward without the initial cost, but it allows him to also save his money, because he will do something with it, or his kids or somebody. But allows us a way to say yes, and it gets fair all the way around. But as soon as that, now, hold on. I want to be really clear on this. As soon as more than twenty-five percent of a remodel or a re-something of that house happens. Yeah, because I don't want him to say, and, because right now, our code says if you keep the same two existing two walls, it's just a remodel. It's not a. Right?
Yeah.
So if he does anything more than twenty-five percent of the value of the structure, then the road has to be moved.
Okay, it sounds great. The development agreement, we do have in there that you can't go with anything else within that first sixty feet, unless it is commercial, at which point, when he does that commercial use, he's gotta build all the street, um, improvements as well. And so we do have triggers like that. We could add that one.
Yeah, just twenty-five percent.
Oh, it's great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to, uh, our, uh, next discussion, which is a discussion. Commissioner Faur, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you for your thoughts or opinion on that. Do you have any? Hold on, Sean, Felix. Do you have any thoughts or opinion on that?
I think you came up with the right answer. A lot of discussion with a short answer, but the, the issue is this, is when he turns it to commercial, that's the time to hold his feet to the fire. So right now, nope, no, no issue, no problem, but let's make sure that before he turns that, tears the house down or does something else, that that road is, uh, in compliance with what we want to see. So, good job.
Oh, thank you. Okay, there you go. We'll now move on then to item number five, which is the discussion, discussion regarding the mitigation protection on the Weaver River. Let's go ahead and change out the room. Lisa, Gary. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Hey.
Geneva. I have a question for you. Come on over here, will you? Lance? What's happening?
How you doing?
Jeff. I thought, I remember you. I thought that Andy, Andrew.
I appreciate that.
I thought you, I I thought you'd be.
Nice to see you.
No, you're not anyone's.
I bounce, bounce wherever I'm told. Gage, we're, uh, just so you know, you can see that Bren's online. Welcome, Bren. Andrew's also in the room. Jeff and Geneva are also here uh, regarding, uh, uh, that property out there, which is gonna be the what do you call it? I call it the, that Gibson area. What do you call it?
West Weaver.
West Houston.
Okay. All right. Uh, the, we're gonna call it the, because you call it the Emerald Necklace, and because Wicked is now a pop, we're gonna call it the Emerald City, and we're waiting for the wizard to come in soon. Okay, yeah, I like Emerald City. If you guys break out into song, we'll know. Okay, well, Lisa, guess what? You're listed first.
Yes.
You know what that means?
That means I get to let you know why we're here.
Well, or you can assign it to somebody else. There you go. How's that?
That's fine. So I wanted to call this meeting because as you know, we have an ordinance for a three-hundred-foot setback on the Western Weaver, and we, in emergency management, we feel like that that is really important. I've been in discussions with Gary for a while about what mitigation might look like. Um, as you know, the flooding is a concern. Those banks are quite vertical, and there's sharp turns. So we have a lot of concern about trying to keep that river from having issues with the flooding and with losing our banks or eroding, and so we wanted to talk about when we hear whispers that there might be development within that three-hundred-foot, we feel like some of the mitigation we would like to do requires for the most part, that three-hundred-foot, to do some of the things that we would like to do. And so I'm going to ask Gary to kinda explain what some of those things are. And then just to reiterate with emergency management, this is something that is important to us. We feel that you know, to protect our residents and to protect the river, that this three-hundred-foot is, is integral to that. I don't think there's anything else I wanted to mention.
You can interrupt me.
All right, that works.
Oh, I appreciate that, thank you. That also applies to your friend out there, the Duck House guy, right? Who is that? What's his name? Never mind. But you, but you do know the
I do know.
You do know the voice. Okay, go ahead, thank you. Gary?
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
Well, here we go. So I'm pretty good at just kinda stating my mind on stuff, so I'll just kinda leave with that, but like Lisa alluded to, this ordinance was put in place to help preserve the corridor along the river for a couple reasons. One of them, beautification, nature preservation, habitat, wildlife, all of that, but which is great, that's good. From my perspective, probably a little bit more importantly and higher ranking on the scale, we're looking at it from a floodplain perspective, commissioners, as was made very evident to us, especially two years ago, and has been made evident to the county prior to my involvement in other flooding events, that river has some challenges. Over hundreds of years of farming, farmers have essentially just kinda pushed ground as its level, how they can irrigate, to maximize what they can do, and they've pushed it all the way up to and choked off the river. To where what Lisa alluded to, there's places out there, commissioners, where that bank of the river is all but vertical. And when we have these high-flow events, like we had two years ago, last year wasn't quite as bad, but it, it was, it was healthy flows coming down there. We had great cooperation with Weaver Basin to manage the flows, so that helped a lot. But we never know what Mother Nature's gonna throw at us in regards to the pace at which snow melts and runoff happens, as well as other rain or other events that happen alongside it. It is springtime, we do get wet springs. So, as Lisa alluded to, the corridor was identified, established in the general plan that was approved, Charlie, two years ago?
Yeah.
Two years ago, and that, that plan was to have a three-hundred-foot setback from the river on both sides. Now, if you fast forward to where we're at today, we have seen one development come, come in, Black Pine on the west side of the river at 12th Street, where they were given approval to not have as much of the setback as that three-hundred-foot is identified as. And that, it is what it is, but moving forward, as more and more development happens, I'm sure the requests will come to commissioners, to planning commissions, everybody else to try to deviate from that three-hundred-foot setback. I'm very, very much aware and sensitive to the fact that that three-hundred-foot setback, depending on your riverfrontage, is a significant amount of progress. And that is a significant ask. And I, and I very much hear and empathize with what that means. However, uh, the reason I wanted to Lisa and I wanted to meet with you guys today is what we want to avoid is situations where we know the river's going to rise, and perhaps there are structures, houses, homes, people's possessions, or even lives themselves, people living in those homes within, within that area that could see potential damage. So we wanted to just kind of advocate for your adherence to the three-hundred-foot setback is probably the best best way I can politically come up with saying that. Is that, is that fair?
Well, it's something.
It's, it's something, and it's simply my request as the county engineer, because you know, I, I don't like being in those situations where you're seeing the river saturate those banks for months at a time, and then see a high surge come that's unavoidable, and wondering whether or not things are gonna hold. That's not a good place to be in. And especially if you've got businesses, homes, commercial, industrial, whatever, whatever the, the land use is deemed as, that's investment, that's people's property and lives at stake there. So I like to be as cognizant and responsible about as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Grover, any comments or questions?
Definitely. So when the planning commission reviewed and approved the Gibson rezone, not rezone, but the general plan amendment, there was specific language in there, and there currently is in our general plan about that three-hundred-foot, and it doesn't give flexibility to that, and the planning commission did not recommend making changes to that. However, there is options in your report that's coming before you tomorrow to possibly look at those language changes to three-hundred-foot based upon possible scientific data and information, making sure that they provide the wildlife, wildlife corridor and the flooding issues, and address those things that way. But you may forward that back to the planning commission for them to look at that, because that was not part of their recommendation. I just want that out on the table, that that was not part of, of their recommendation. But however, if it is reduced, those things have to be addressed, because Gary's right, those are very important issues that we do not want, you know, those type of things compromised, especially when we're dealing with flooding issues. But, you know, I can be respectful of the developer and, you know, their concerns that they have, because three-hundred-foot is a lot of area, and if there is a way to show how that could be reduced, put the onus on them to address those issues and basically make our engineering department happy in addressing that. You, you know, maybe some areas, three-hundred-foot is not necessary, but maybe it is. And so, you know, what we would be proposing is that there may be, there may be some flexibility, but if we wanna stay hard and fast to that three-hundred-foot, you know, that's right there in the general plan. It's very specific, and so if we were to deviate from that, it would require an amendment in the general plan, and like I mentioned at the beginning, the planning commission did not recommend approval of that. So, you could still proceed, but send it back to their planning commission for their review on that.
Ashley, you wanna chime in here?
I, I could, but I, I'd be interested to hear what Charlie.
We're gonna get there.
Yeah, okay.
I just thought I'd give you a chance.
I think Gary said it very well.
Okay.
There's some serious concerns.
Thank you. Charlie, well, wait a second. Charlie, and then Commissioner Edwards, I'm gonna give you a chance to pipe in in a minute. Charlie, go ahead.
I'm interested in hearing what Bren has to say.
Well, I'd like to hear that I went to you first for a reason.
Well, one of the reasons why I, I let Jeff and Geneva know the other day that it's purely coincidental that this conversation today is happening the day before there's an item on your agenda. I didn't know this meeting was happening until I saw it on my calendar, and I beelined it into Gary's office and said, what is this? This is getting in the way. But it's probably worth the conversation. So on your agenda tomorrow, like Rick mentioned, you do have a Stafford report and a resolution proposing to amend the general plan. And it's proposing to amend the general plan two ways. One way is to amend the future land use map of the plan, so that the applicant's proposal can move forward. And then the second is to amend the general plan text language regarding that three-hundred-foot distance, and maybe putting some flexibility into the general plan to allow some scientific input to deviate from that. As Rick mentioned again, the planning commission only saw, and so only recommended on the map. I think that's gonna be important to be able to know.
Charlie also mentioned that the map, how they approved it, is the map is not recommended to be approved, the general plan map, until the rezone happens as well.
Yeah, they, they said we, that they do recommend updating or amending the general plan, that new map, but not making it applicable until this applicant's rezone goes through. So we just put some strings on there to say it can't be implemented until the rezone goes through, basically. So just wanted to let you guys know that those things were happening, but planning commission didn't not address this for any specific reason, but they also chose to uh, well, excuse me, I said that wrong. The planning commission chose to not specifically address the three-hundred-foot setback. It was in my staff report, we did point it out that if they really don't wanna see a deviation from the three-hundred-foot rule, then they should probably say it. Or if they really want to stick strictly to the three-hundred-foot rule, then they should probably say it. And they didn't say either. Which leads me to believe, and I'll let Bren and Andrew speak for themselves, but it leads me to believe the planning commission was thinking, maybe there are opportunities to be flexible. Because they didn't specifically say do it this way or do it that way. Jeff called me up before that planning commission meeting and said, I wish you wouldn't have said anything in the staff report about the open space, we're gonna have to fix that later, we're planning on addressing that corridor later. But I mentioned, wouldn't you wanna hear from the planning commission if the answer's known a little earlier? And, and that's the reason why that came up. I do think that the applicant has best intentions here, and that they've got a really cool project come down the pipeline. I also know what the public told us very strongly when we were making the general plan, and so I don't think I'd be doing my job if I didn't bring those kinds of things to your attention, just to make sure you're aware of them.
Mr. Edwards, would you like, would you like to comment, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. I got several. So first off, I just, I guess I need a point of clarification. Both Gary and Lisa stated the three-hundred-foot is an ordinance. I'm unaware anywhere in county ordinance that states that outside of the general plan, and the general plan is just a guiding document, correct?
It's an ordinance.
Charlie says it is an ordinance.
We actually have an ordinance that states that.
Bren, hold on. Section one oh eight dash seven dash twenty-three under River and Stream Corridor Setbacks, Western Weaver County.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you pointing that out, cuz I was always under the impression that it was, that it was just a general plan deal, and, and I've done some research onto the general plan, and, cuz I I mean, I was heavily involved, and Andrew can speak to this too. I had no idea where that three-hundred-foot come from, and so, doing some research on it, they reached out to our county extension agent years ago, Cody Zestiger, and that's where that number come from. He actually recommended five hundred, but, but they bumped it down to three hundred in the plan. So, when it comes to stating, you know, there, there's flood mitigation and, and everything else, I don't disagree with that, but from my view of this, you know, I would hate if, if they come in and, and build some, you know, slope, the slopes of them banks, give that river a chance to spread out, slow down. I'm not an engineer, and I'm not the smartest person, but generally, the wider the water goes, and it gets shallower, the slower it's gonna go, and we're not gonna have the erosion points. I disagree with Gary's comments, that the farmers filled up the edges of the river and, and pushed it to them steep banks. You can go out south of the tracks and find areas that's never been farmed, and those are some of the steepest eroded out parts of that whole river, so I, I just, I have great concern with, with this whole discussion. I would like to see scientific data, or, you know, let our engineers go to work and show us you know, what they feel. If, if we're gonna start staking this on an emergency management standpoint and claim that, that public safety or lives could be lost, there's gotta be a way that we can show this so that we can make the right decision. Now, I don't disagree with what's been said, there's areas of this river that probably do need to have three-hundred feet, because there are already lower areas, and that water probably already floods to it. But I think there's other areas that maybe don't need to be that wide. And to just draw a hard line all the way along that river and say three-hundred foot's the point, I don't think, for one, I know, well, I shouldn't say I know, but I have a pretty good feeling Taylor West Weaver Parks cannot afford to maintain that. The county probably can't even afford to maintain that. I'm gonna throw on my weed board hat for a minute. All that's gonna be, it's been farmed for years, we walked away from farming it. Now it's just gonna be a mess of noxious weeds, and it's gonna take a lot of years to get that rehab with trees growing and everything else in there, that I just think the cost outweighs the benefit, for one. And to speak for I guess my thoughts from the planning commission when we approved this, it wasn't in our language as a text amendment to, to approve, at least the way I understand what went on in our meeting. We were approving colors. We were approving the colors on the map. And so, yeah, it was discussed a little bit to the river. But what the discussion went, at least from my recollection, was we would handle this at rezone. Similar to what took place on the commercial development on the west side of the river, that all got handled at the rezone, and, and it got shrunken up. So to say that the, the planning commission didn't weigh in on the text portion of this, I don't think, and, and Andrew can jump in on this one, but I don't, the way I understood it, we weren't looking at a text amendment to the general plan. So if that's what we wanna do, I would strongly recommend you kick it back to us and, and let us go through and vet it. Let's get some information behind it, some, some factual information behind it to see what's probably the best long-term solution for that area. So and, and to the staff report, I've been very frustrated this week, and I'm gonna go out and I'm gonna get on, you give me a minute, Harvey, I'm gonna take it. Our staff report.
I'm ready to shut you down, so start if you'd start wrapping it up, if you would.
The staff report talks a lot about the river, and it talks nothing about the discussion the planning commission had in relation to what was on the table to vote on a general plan amendment to the colors on the map. It talks a lot about the river and nothing else, so thank you.
Thank you, Bren. I appreciate those comments, and I appreciate your history of the area too, your knowledge of that. Andrew, I'm gonna give you a chance to make a couple of comments if you'd like to. Then for those of you online, we also have Lance Peterson from the parks, and I'll give you a chance, Lance, if you'd like to just take a quick moment to speed. Go ahead, Andrew.
Well, real quick, from the perspective of the planning commission when we heard this, the anticipation was, and I think it's across the board, that, and pretty safe to say it's across the board, that we were going to tackle this obstacle when we got into the rezone. There wasn't a lot of conversation about it, as I recall, in the meeting itself. And it was something that we were, we were going to probably address further as we got closer to the rezoning. Right, wrong, or otherwise, that's, that's what I recall about how that went. As far as it goes, you know, I think that I would like to see it again in front of the planning commission to, to take a better look at it, you know, if, if we need to, to address the rezone, or excuse me, the amendment to the general plan and add that, you know, that item to it. I, I'd like to see it there so that we could, we could have some, some input on it, along with a lot more information than we have had up to this point.
Thank you, Andrew. Lance, would you like to say anything? Just a quick comment or anything?
Well, I, yeah, quick comment.
As, as a, as a member of the Park District, I wanna be fair.
I'm a member of the Park District. You know, I I don't wanna get in an arg- I don't want to get in an argument with Brandon over the Park District can do this or can't do that. Um, but don't sell us short. Um, one thing I talked with Jeff about the other night, last Thursday, we had a two and a half hour long chat is as this development grows and we work the the um the river, you know, I I'm I I've been in touch with NRCS and the the strategy I've thrown out to them, they loved. Uh, I've I've talked to some some others, engineers. They think that we're on the right track of, you know, taking this almost vertical channel. And blame me, along that Gibson side, it's almost all vertical, okay? Bring it ten feet wide, lay it down thirty, forty degrees, build a shelf where we maybe we've got three thousand CFS uh level where we've got maybe a bike trail and a horse trail and then bring it up again where we've got the the asphalt trail up on top. We don't have a concept and that's what I'm working on as a park district, just develop a cross-section view of that river with a cross with a a cross-section view of a concept for the parkway. Um, you know, nineteen sixty-one, first grade, I was watching Alan Shepard in a mercury capsule land in first grade. Did NASA have the ability to launch people to the moon in sixty-one? Hell no. But seven years later, they they were able to pull it off. Don't judge us by what we can do now by what we can do as this development grows and we have an increase in our tax revenues coming in. Uh, I told Jeff, I'm not a adverse to committing the tax revenue from this subdivision, this development to first make sure the river's maintained properly and then before we we divert it to other areas in the Park District. So uh I'm just leaving it at that.
Thank you. I'm gonna uh Commissioner Faur, I'm gonna go to you next and then to you, Commissioner Bolos. I'm gonna interject a short comment before I close on that, but uh just Lance, you made a statement there, but for me, I think as flow goes, five thousand cubic feet per second. So as you step up and then step up again, I want to see at least something five thousand or maybe even six thousand cubic feet a second moving forward as the plan goes.
That would be a higher level.
I wanted to make a comment. One of the things um to consider is that if we have this ordinance and we have it in our plan and then we ask for grants to do some of this work, something like that, a concept that would allow it to be recreational as well as give us an access road, um level it out more, all of that is wonderful. But if we go for grants to be able to allow us and we're making variances to that ordinance to that general plan, that might hurt us in our in our efforts to do so. And if we have a declared disaster, we may not pay.
Hold on, Lisa, but it it would be if if the if it were stated and and I I I want to just be clear here, but if it were stated that if there were going to be something done to make improvements to the overall flow of the river against uh something that hasn't happened or or to at least handle more than a hundred year, I I think that that could be if we make a change even to the ordinance that could allow it better because it was, we were flooding it thirty-something hundred cubic feet a second, two thousand seventeen, right, Gary?
Yeah.
And we did, we did successfully forty-five hundred two years ago.
That's right.
Where we didn't flood. So there there's a lot of good things that have happened going to your comment about the space.
Reader's Digest version.
Okay, so hold on just a second. Um, Commissioner Faur, I want to go to you next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let's just clarify, first off, where did the three hundred feet come from? I think Commissioner Commissioner Harvey, you'll remember that uh myself, you and Commissioner Jenkins sat in a room as we discussed that when we did the general plan outline and we talked anywhere from fifty feet to five hundred feet. We decided at that point in time, with the three of us, that three hundred is probably a logical place to start, but we I think we made it clear that the intent of that three hundred feet was to allow property owners and development to basically look at that river and the impact that that three hundred feet, fifty feet or hundred feet or five hundred would have on the river, on flooding, uh flood mitigation, et cetera. And the time to do that would be if anybody came in from a rezon. Keep in mind that prior to that, what was the easement on the river? Gary, did we have?
Basically, nothing.
It was zero. Let's, okay, let's be truthful. It was zero. So now we're talking about taking three hundred feet of somebody's private property for an event that may happen. And again, Gary, I understand where you're going, but it may not happen. I'm pretty familiar with flooding out on that river over the past s- number of years.
How many? How many you were about to say were, but I'm sorry we missed it. Okay, anyway, uh several. I think the word was several years.
Several years, yeah, yeah. Anyway, we know that there's areas that that probably need three hundred feet, but we don't think, you know, we don't know for a fact. In fact, we know for a fact that not all areas along that river need three hundred feet. So I I kind of go back to what the original intent of this was, Chair Harvey, which is let the individual property owner, let the planning commission deal with this. If they feel that the property owner, the developers come in on a rezon and they can justify less than that, then let that be a development standard. I don't think we carte blanche uh should even though we have the right to go in and take this, this is eminent domain. And so let's be careful with how we deal with that. So that's my comment. Put it back to the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolos.
Well, I'm I I'm inclined to support our emergency manager and our engineer. Um, if if they don't feel like that three hundred is necessary, then we should fix this ordinance that's sitting right in front of us. And it looks like it was amended in uh twenty twenty-three. So it's not that long ago. Um, if they if if they were comfortable and they were in here saying that they're okay with with a variance, then I think I would support that. I don't even remember this conversation on Black Pine. I don't remember a conversation from you guys. But.
Was not involved in that conversation. Well, we did something just a year ago, eighteen or even twenty-two months ago, so anything else? Okay. First off, you know, I'm glad you brought this up today. Over the weekend, I was thinking about this uh without remembering what was gonna be on the agenda. But I just, I started thinking about and they weren't amorous feelings. I just want to be very clear, Charlie, but I was thinking about you and I'm thinking.
Why were they amorous?
Because absolutely they would be. But they were. I said, Charlie, I'm thinking, why? Why, I hope that, here's what I thought. I thought, I hope that, I think Commissioner Bolos and I were fairly clear when we talked about making sure that when we do a, we're not just gonna do this spot zoning, right? And then we're gonna do something with the master plan. Is that right, Rick? And we talked about that. We were gonna do uh another tune-up. Why, you had a name for it, uh that of the master plan. Right? And so I see this as kind of a little bit of a an interruption to that, and whether maybe because you're pushing a little bit. I think it's a wonderful plan. I don't, please don't get me wrong. I think it's a wonderful plan, but I'm not, I don't want to do spot zoning. So, so the other thing that that has come to light today is we have a process thing that we need to do in Weaver County. Because with what's happening and this being on the agenda and somebody said, I didn't even know it was on the agenda, or you said, Lisa, we got wind of, or Gary, I think you're the one that says, when I heard of, uh we did, that needs to be part of what we do. I would like to see emergency management and I would like to see a little more cohesive, a little more of a um team. We're better than that as a team. And so, look, and I know you, every one, there's we in in this state, our county does more things per person than anybody else. Whether that's power of arrest, whether that's engineering, whether that's number of paramedics, whether, it doesn't matter, building permits. It doesn't, we do more per person than anybody else at all the other counties. So I know you're really, really busy, but we've got to do, I'm gonna ask you to do one more thing. And that's be a little more get this involved, to get everybody involved because I think with what Commissioner Bolos said, uh to to support, I'd like you guys to be able to say uh on this particular project, man, this is great. This improved even better than what we've had in the past, and you know what we've had in the past. It's no secret. And some of these guys, I mean, Andrew's a newer model, but he's got a lot of experience. And so he's got, we, I don't want to disregard the farmer who's been out there and has all this experience. Look, we don't need to go far. The river is a very, very powerful body of water that changes flow every day. And certainly every year with every snowfall, but it's not more powerful than the ocean. And as you walk up and down any pathway that they've made pathways along the ocean, it's sometimes fifteen hundred feet from some and it's right on the water's edge from others. You don't need to have, that's just how it works. You don't need to have three hundred feet or fifteen hundred feet carte blanche along the whole thing because mother nature, the water determines what that is. So what I'd like to see is everybody come up with a better solution because it is nice to be able to walk right on the water's edge of the ocean every now and again. And it is nice to see a beach before you hit the water on the water's edge. That's just how it goes. The same thing's true with rivers. Uh, even in the as the Weber comes down, all those points, just so you know. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna uh uh I would like the two of you, not necessarily, sorry, but representatives of, but I'd like you involved and I'd like to kick this back to the planning commission and let them saddle it up for a while. And in the meantime, when are we looking at doing this uh uh so we're not doing spot zoning but tuning up our uh uh master plan out there?
So that's something I wanted to visit with you about, especially with the incorporation and the cost of that. And I wanted to go over some of those things with you and I was gonna put that on a work session agenda um probably next Monday. But I wanted to talk specific um with you about some of those numbers where we have some information that Scott Parks provided um the last little bit.
That's, you mean with, okay, Commissioner Bolos, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Faur?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with that.
Faur, are you comfortable with that? Okay, thank you. All right, so let's let's do that. Let's kick her back to the planning and then you guys, Jeff will give you and Geneva just a chance to
Okay, yeah.
chime in for a minute.
So um and thank you for letting us be here. So we didn't ask for this to change, to be very clear. Um, the agenda item tomorrow, I didn't have, when we went to the planning commission, we didn't ask for the text to be changed. For you guys tomorrow, we did not ask for the text to be changed. So so what what we're hoping is that the the application that we made can be on the agenda tomorrow, doesn't get kicked back because we have, we're not asking for this, we're not asking for a text amendment, any of that. The reason that this came up is we have in conversations as we've been talking to people, we've we've asked the question, where does the three hundred feet come from? And the response that we got is the same that Gage talked about, which, no, I under- I understand it's in an ordinance. But the actual number of three hundred feet, it was not based on any, as far as I understand it, it was not a scientific number that came to be. Now, it could be that three hundred feet is the appropriate setback. But what what we're hoping is, one, that it doesn't get misunderstood. Number one for us, if this thing goes forward, is safety. And if safety determines that it should be a thousand feet back, then that's what we would do. If it's a hundred feet back, that's what we would do, but we are, we are not misaligned when it comes to safety. In fact, we probably care more than people in this room because it impacts us directly.
It'll impact your project.
Right. And and the last thing we need is for people to be worried that things are gonna flood, right? So we're we're highly sensitive to that. And we would probably either make engineering decisions or setback decisions, right? One or the other to to make sure that flooding doesn't happen. So safety is number one. Number two is community benefit. And we're very excited. I mean, Lance said something when we met and he said, we have one shot to make this right. If we if we don't get it right the first time, it's gonna be, we'll never get it back. And we feel the exact same way. If we don't do this right, if we have a gigantic weed patch corridor that's three hundred feet along the river, that doesn't benefit the community. And there's this reference to the Emerald Necklace. The Emerald Necklace is a series of of heavily invested in parks that are connected with a a skinny transit corridor. And when you do that right, it concentrates the energy in the right locations. And then it has a beautiful corridor when you trans, when you go between those parks. That's why it's called the Emerald Necklace. There's a chain that connects these open space parks, which is what we want to do. And if we do it right, it'll be well-maintained. The energy will be concentrated in the right locations. So for me, number one, we want to be safe. We want to work with emergency folks. We want to work with Lance, we want to work with Gary. We want to work with people who have better idea of this than us. We also want to work with our engineers. And we want to come up with the safest plan possible. Whether that's us getting grants and making the river safer, engineer, like you said, Commissioner Harvey, there are places that have a path right next to waterways. You can engineer around this. Now, whether or not we want to do that is a different story. What we found is there is, there's great evidence. I mean, the federal government has a fifty-foot setback to waterways. A lot of people have a hundred foot because they want a a decent wildlife corridor, but a hundred feet is very common if you start looking around waterway development. And so when I said, the only, the only reason this is probably even a thing is I just said, where does the three hundred feet come back, come from? Because that seems pretty rigid to have that all on the way. If you look at how it how it impacts people's property. So we're about five hundred acres on the project we're looking at. This right here is a parcel, a property owner just north of us, so we don't, we don't control this property. That three hundred foot setback takes sixty-five percent of their property. So, you know, I'm I'm, when we go through the rezon and development agreement, if we get the master plan, the general plan thing passed, we'll come back and we'll have this discussion about the, I'm not asking for this discussion right now. We we need to get through tomorrow to say, yeah, we're interested in this or we're not, whatever. If you are, then we'll go back through the rezon development agreement and have this bigger conversation. And if it ends up being three hundred feet, it's three hundred feet. We, what we think from a community benefit is having the rigidity of three hundred feet is actually not in the best interest of the community.
Thank you. Geneva, you have anything you'd like to comment?
I'll let him take my time, so no.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. I think, I think, I appreciate that. I I don't think there's anyone here uh that's opposed to what you're doing and I think we're excited for it. I think we uh have never done anything quite like this before, if we're being absolutely honest. And so we don't, we want to be very careful. We want to be strategic and we have suffered. Uh, what I say suffered, the county has suffered a loss and and emergency in with emergency management and things like that. And and we we don't want to do it again.
Yeah.
And so with that, though, I think the smart thing to do, though, is to send this back to the uh like we talked about with the Commissioner Faur and Commissioner Bolos, send this back to the planning, have them do some more time. But I'm telling you from right now, the general consensus of what we, we want to see you moving forward. We want to figure out the smartest way, just a smart way, but we want to say yes. We want to say yes, we want to do it smartly. And so I think if 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 you if you go back to the planning, but also in planning, if you'll involve Gary and Lisa in some of this stuff, so we have this right. And then however this all works, this genesis of this teamwork working together, we involve uh the Emerald City or whatever you're gonna call it.
Yeah, and I guess the one one question I'd have for that is, so the what the planning commit, what we went through the planning commission went, I mean, it actually, I don't even know what approval we're getting because all it's saying is what they said is, we like the concept subject to rezon development agreement, which was where this would, this would come into play. Like, that's where the design and us. So from tomorrow, I actually would prefer that the staff report don't mention any of this because that's not what we did with the planning commission. What we would prefer is to have exactly what happened in the planning commission go to the county commission, which is that the that the general plan amendment is something that you're open to, that that subject to a rezon application. And in the rezon application, we would then address the three hundred foot setback.
Okay, so and and thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna catch you off there. I don't, look, I'm a little confused on this because I didn't think we were bringing anything back on this project or any others because this to me looks to be something like spot zoning or preparation for spot zoning. And we weren't gonna do any of that. That was kind of my whole diet drive. I didn't want to end it. So, okay, Rick, Charlie, tell me, where are we? So I'm gonna do a little trust in here and then I'm gonna go back to the other commissioners, but I would like to hear from you what that is.
So we ended up including all of So we ended up including all of that area and so it wasn't spot zoning. And that way we end up having a contiguous piece that, um, doesn't qualify for that. But some of the language that we're talking about the three hundred foot, that's in the general plan, it's also in our ordinance. But that's why we were looking at the three hundred foot is because our general plan talks about that. Um, we could have that addressed at the rezone when it goes back to the planning commission. And address those things at that time and just address the general plan tomorrow. Um, and then when we come back with the rezone, we have to amend the general plan a little bit to address the three hundred foot.
If it changes.
If it changes, because the language in the general plan is very specific about the three hundred foot.
Okay, Mr. Bolos, what do you think on that?
I mean, you agree with that.
You're okay with that?
Two different steps, yeah.
Two different steps. Commissioner Faur, are you still with us?
I am, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Let's, and that's just what I said, let's. Uh, the, the general plan is, we've been stated, that, that would just kind of a, a stab with the best practices. But subject to change is what's best for property owners, what's best for the community. Uh, to me, to go to the rezone and then have the discussion on the three hundred feet plus or minus, whatever that is. Needs to take place at a different level, so. Okay, I don't believe, I don't believe it's, uh, that we're talking about a spot.
Okay, so I don't wanna do the spot zone and I wanna make sure that there, I wanna make sure that these two right here are. Heard and, and listen to.
We would bring them in as we look at the rezone and the specifics with that. And then also at that time, we'd be looking at the text amendment, the general plan and to our ordinance. At the same time, because we have to address all of those at the same time.
Very good. All right, any questions? Just, Charlie, you're the one that got us in all this mess.
I'd like to say I'm not.
You're really good at what you do. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Just, uh, I just wanted to make a couple of observations based on the conversation. And Jeff and I are in alignment, uh, on what should be on my agenda tomorrow. I agree that we shouldn't be talking about the corridor setback at all. It's not what the planning commission saw. And I think it'd be a disservice to the planning commission if you talked about the corridor setback.
Who's making the presentation again? Remind me tomorrow. Okay, you got your order.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I think the reason this conversation is happening, happening is because. We have been working as a team to compare notes and, and talk across the different jurisdictions and divisions. Um, and so I think that side that is happening right now is just coming to, it's just bubbling up, uh, uh, in a different direction. Uh, we didn't specifically, Rick and I didn't specifically have this conversation with you guys, because we didn't feel like it was appropriate. From a general plan perspective, but from a rezone perspective, it definitely has to happen.
I think it would show good form that anything along a waterway or emergency management where there's a potentiality. I'd love to see Gary and Lisa's buy-off in the future. Okay?
And we definitely were planning on involving them, but it was more at the rezone level. Um, so that was addressed because that's when we get into more specifics.
Right. Feel good, feel good about that? You too, Lisa, Gary?
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Thank you. I think that concludes our discussion on this topic. Appreciate it. All right, item number seven, uh, wa, excuse me, item number six is a motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I will adjourn.